Well, good evening. My name is Cheryl Freund and I am the moderator for tonight's Rice County District 3 Commissioner Candidate Forum. Two seats representing Faribault are up for election on the Rice County Board of Commissioners. Gerald Hoysington and Sam Temple are running for District 3 seat. Only voters who reside in that district, which encompasses eastern Faribault, will cast votes. On behalf of the Faribault branch of the American Association of University Women hosting this event, I welcome the candidates, members of the audience, and those viewing from this forum being broadcast live on FCTV. So, welcome Gerald Hoysington and Sam Temple. Each candidate will be given two minutes to introduce himself and explain why he is running for position on the Rice County Board of Commissioners for District 3. Then each candidate will be given one minute to answer questions from the audience. There are timekeepers in the audience who will give a warning sign to the candidates close to their time limit, and then a sign of time telling the candidates to end their comments. Candidates, please speak loudly into your microphone and project your voice to the back of the room. Thank you. Members of the audience are invited to write questions on a slip of paper provided by the volunteers, who will then collect them and give them to me to be asked of the candidates. As the moderator, I will vary which candidate begins the round of questioning so that each one gets equal opportunity to respond. Audiences, be respectful, hold your applause until the conclusion of the forum. Thank you. Opening Statement. In two minutes, please introduce yourself and explain why you are a candidate for the Rice County Board of Commissioners District 3, and I will begin with Gerald Hoysington.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the American Association of University of Women for hosting this event and giving me an opportunity to have people get to know who I am. Jerry Hoysington, I was born in Faribault in 1955 at St. Lucas Hospital. I've lived my whole life here. Went to school, last graduating class from St. Lawrence Catholic School, 8th grade, and graduated from BA in 1973. Went on to the Faribault Area Vocational Technical Institute in 1976 and married my high school sweetheart in 1976 and started my career in the carpentry field. I then worked my way up through the carpentry field to being a project superintendent. In the meantime, we've raised a large family, nine children, 36 grandchildren, and I don't know if it's a prerequisite, but when you have four teenagers in one household at one time, at least it's a qualifier for county commissioner. I've worked 30 years as a construction superintendent and I feel like that's prepared me very well to be the next county commissioner in District 3. And I just appreciate the opportunity to be here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hoysington. Sam Temple, two minutes to give us some information about yourself and why you are running for Commissioners District 3.
Thank you. And thank you to the AAUW for hosting this event. This organization has such a strong history of civic engagement and being important pillars, not just of our community, but of communities nationwide. So, I think some folks in the audience know me well enough to know that I'm not blowing smoke when I say it genuinely is. Very special to be a candidate at this forum, and I appreciate the invitation. It's special because of that history of civic engagement. History is something that I take very seriously, and civic engagement likewise is something that is very important to me. So, to see a group of people, a local organization, that takes its duties seriously as stewards of our civic community, it means a great deal because we've seen decreases in engagement. We've seen decreases in folks being involved in their local community. We've seen decreases in people's ability to be involved in local community. And I want to boost opportunities, increase outreach for folks to be able to be involved, and that was really my motivating factor for running for commissioner. I want to change the political expectations for folks living in our district, District 3, the eastern half of Faribault. That is what I hope to do, is to bring about a new conversation with the one life that I have, I want it to be positive change that I'm contributing to. And that's what I hope to bring and that's what I hope to create for the future that we can build at the county level. So, again, with gratitude to the AAUW, I thank you for inviting me here, and I look forward to hearing your questions and discussing the future of Faribault.
Thank you, Sam. Okay, the first question will be going to Sam, and the question is, what would be your top three priorities if you are elected as the new commissioner?
Thank you. Well, this is a little easy because I've identified three pillars that most of my beliefs and programs can fall under, and that is transparency, stability for working people, and respect for everyone. A lot of that falls into how we communicate county programs and ideas with the public. I've been advocating since the start of this campaign to have county meetings recorded and livestreamed like what we're doing with this forum right now because up until very recently, they were not recorded, they were not televised, and they were not livestreamed. That's especially a problem because county commissioners meet at 8:30 a.m. on Tuesday mornings. Needless to say, that's very difficult for most working people to attend those meetings to be part of the public input. And so, not only do we need to record meetings and make livestreams available, we also need to move meeting times to the evenings. So, that's one priority. But beyond that, with respect and stability for folks, we need to be able to reach out. The job of the county commissioner is not just in the boardroom. It needs to be out in the community, talking to people, seeking out public input even when there isn't a hot button issue. That's why with this campaign, I've been having regular events like I will have as county commissioner that are both in person, online, at various times of the day, on different days of the week, so that there are options for as many people to attend, and there's a consistency in schedule there that folks can come to rely on. I know that that can happen because I've already been doing it, and it's that consistency and that work that people can come to expect when I'm county commissioner. When you treat people with respect, when you make them feel heard, that their view of Faribault and its future is valued, that's how you foster community of respect that can be forward-thinking.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hoysington. What would be your top three priorities if you are elected as our new commissioner?
Well, I know that physical responsibility...
We can't hear you as well?
Oh, I'm sorry. Physical responsibility. Right now, especially during this time, families in Faribault are suffering and hurting with inflation at 9 percent, gas prices at all-time high. People are hurting, and I think that we need to take a closer look at what we do as a county and the money that we spend. I, like my opponent Sam, transparency. I feel like I'll just be a conduit and represent the people of Faribault. I've been saying all along that I want to be a voice for the people and a voice of reason. And personal freedoms. I think families need the right and choice to decide what is best for their families. This past three years, we've went through quite a lot of turmoil and a lot of restrictions and a lot of personal problems arose from that. So, freedom, transparency, physical responsibility. That's where I'm at.
Thank you very much. The second question will go to Mr. Hoysington, and that question is this. As the need for mental health care grows, how can the county help, given the shortage of mental health professionals, especially psychiatrists? Many times individuals in our county are waiting six weeks or longer to see a psychiatrist.
Yeah, mental health is a big issue right now. I know that my son-in-law works for the county and he's directly involved with that. I just think we need to be in tune to it and make it a priority to try to understand and help anybody that we can. I will get involved once I'm commissioner. I'm going to dig right in, understand the issues, and talk to the people that can provide us with good answers. In my career, I've been a superintendent, and I don't necessarily always have all of the answers, but I've been very good at being able to go to the people and finding the answers. So, it's a very real problem, and it's something that I definitely will not ignore.
Question.
As the need for mental health care grows, how can the county help, given the shortage of mental health care professionals, especially psychiatrists? Many times individuals in our county are waiting six weeks or longer to see a psychiatrist.
My goal with all policies is to be proactive, but the truth is, it's too late to be proactive with this issue. We need to both catch up to the needs of our community while looking at the future, and that is going to mean listening to experts. I am not an expert in this. I can research, I can do my best, I can try and represent the perspectives of someone looking at this from the outside of the profession. But when we're talking about building systems of support, we need to listen to experts in where will our investment be the most effective. Things like mental health care will be part of the interdisciplinary approach that we've had with the opioid crisis, for example. That has required the county to work with not just law enforcement and medical professionals, but also mental health professionals and school professionals, folks working from government and nonprofit sectors. There's a lot of work that needs to be done, but the biggest thing that we can do is be able to make the case to the public that this is worth an investment. This is something that we do need, and not just we need so many beds, we need specific kinds of beds. Adolescents and adults need different units and different care needs for their mental health resources. This needs to be a priority, and this needs to be something that a county commissioner needs to go to bat for, to say, this is worth the investment, it will not only benefit you should you or a family member or a loved one need a facility like this for your own care, but having a safe place for people to be, having a place in your community that you know you can rely on and that your neighbors can rely on, that makes everybody healthy, not just the individuals getting care.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Temple, the third question is, what action would you support at the county level to address climate change?
Again, this is where something being proactive would have been appropriate, but at this point, we are not there. There are things we can do when it comes to carbon emissions in terms of local industry, but first and foremost, we need to protect ourselves against the effects of climate change. Because whether or not we can reduce our local output, the effects of output from around the world are affecting more and more hundred-year floods happening just within a single lifetime, more and more extreme weather events. This summer is a great example where one week we have one kind of extreme weather and the next we're experiencing a different kind of extreme weather. Those events are not new, but the extreme nature of all of those events is unique and it's directly related to CO2 output around the world. We can't affect CO2 output around the world here in Faribault and Rice County, but we can affect how well our runoff systems are ready to work against more and more extreme flooding. We can deal with extreme hail, extreme snow, more and more unstable weather systems that are more prone to tornadoes. We need to be proactive about these things, otherwise we'll be experienced... We can look to just what happened in Florida with the most recent hurricane. That was an extreme event, and because of higher CO2 emissions, warmer tides made the hurricane actually remain on land longer than it otherwise would have, causing more and more destruction. We need every piece of our infrastructure to be proactively protected against more and more extreme weather events in the future beyond what we've experienced in the past.
Mr. Hoysington, what actions would you support at the county level to address climate change?
Well, I believe we're all called to be good stewards, and taking care of our planet is part of that. I would, at the county level, that's a good question. I think that we need to let the market take a part of this and not mandate like the use of electric cars, and I think it's good. I think it needs to be a market issue, though, and I'm a favor of it. I'm totally in favor of it. But I think our system needs to be able to handle it, and right now, we're putting ourselves in a bad position with shutting down fossil fuels and not being able to meet the demand for electricity, especially when we're pushing more and more for electric. There's a... My whole career, I've always asked why, and I've always liked to look at both sides of an argument. And I think that we need to just study the issues and understand where we're at and be good stewards. That's where I'm at with that.
Thank you. Okay, the next question is, this one is going to Mr. Hoysington. You represent opposite ends of the age gap in your career spectrum. How do you see your own situation as an asset you could bring to our county commissioners?
Yes, Sam and I are on opposite ends of the spectrum. I feel like my life experiences have prepared me well to be the next county commissioner. I've lived a lot of life, I've seen a lot of things, I've got a lot of experience, informed some fantastic relationships, and it's like having a reservoir to go back on. Throughout my life, I've been in a lot of difficult situations, like most people have, and I've had to... When you're in a tough spot, you need to put your feet down and grind it out. One example would be 2008 when the market crashed. I, like many of us in this room, have lost 40 percent of my wealth during that crash, and it stuns you, and you have to just dig in and grind it out. And we've come up through it, you know? Back in the early 80s, we had gasoline rationing. You couldn't give a four-wheel pickup, four-wheel-drive pickup away at that time. But there again, the ups and downs of the markets. We had 15 percent home interest rates back in the 80s. If we thought it was 10 percent, we'd be doing well. So, my past experiences and the relationships I've fostered will just lead me well to be the next county commissioner.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Temple, you represent opposite ends of the age gap or the career gap. How do you see your own situation as an asset you would bring to the county commissioners?
Yeah. My experience growing up has been very different from Mr. Hoysington. It's been very different from many people in this room, except for maybe Colton. But my entire adult life has been dealing with one crisis after another. In school, every door needed to be locked because we didn't know if there was going to be an active shooter on the other side. People have compared this to atomic bomb drills with people hiding under their desks. The only difference is, you didn't know if one of your classmates or one of your neighbors was hiding an atomic bomb under their coat. That's the level of intensity that the world has thrust upon people growing up in the 21st century. I have not known a time when the United States was not at war, that young men and women were not overseas. I have not known a time when my future was not constantly at stake at the hands of people making decisions with every single vote. I plan to live in Faribault for a long time, and that's why I have dedicated my entire, albeit short, adult life to serving my community. Right out of high school, I served in AmeriCorps at a local nonprofit. I've been serving on the Planning Commission and the Heritage Preservation Commission for as long as I have been eligible. It's exactly why I work in local government now. It's exactly why I've been sharing Faribault's history for as long as I've had the tools and the support to do so. I'm committed to this community and this community's future because it is intrinsically tied to my future, and I don't have any time to wait to make that a safe future.
Thank you. The next question will go to Mr. Temple, and that is, what do you believe is one of the most pressing issues that the people of Rice County face, and how would you address it and pay for it?
How would you address it and pay for it? That's a good caveat at the end for a two-minute question. The truth is, the most pressing issue that a citizen of Faribault, of Rice County, is going to face is almost certainly not going to have anything to do with the local government. It's going to be a death in the family. It's going to be an illness. It's going to be losing a job, losing a home, having housing insecurity. With rental vacancy of 0.5 percent, there aren't a lot of options if you suddenly find yourself out of a home. But what we can do at the county level, since those unpredictable forces are part of life, is to make sure that the county government is not an additional hindrance in that struggle. So, if you decide you need help, if you decide that you have food insecurity, you have housing insecurity, then we can save costs to pay for benefits like the ones I'd have in mind by cutting the administrative cost of putting barriers up, of saying, no, you only need help if we decide that you're eligible to receive help. People tend to know when they need help, when they're having that crisis, regardless of how much money they make, regardless of how much their tax bill might have been the previous year. Everyone is investing some amount in local services, whether it is roads and bridges, social security, anything like that. We're all funding this infrastructure. So then, when those unpredictable things in life, like a death in the family, like an illness, like insecurity occurs, the government needs to be taking away barriers to get the help that people decide they need and not spending more money putting up more and more barriers. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hoysington, again, the question is, what is one of the most pressing issues that the people of Rice County face, and how would you address it and how would you pay for it?
Well, I think right now, it's the economy. Working families are being squeezed from all sides. Like I alluded to earlier, inflation, grocery bills, fuel costs. If you're a working family on a 40-hour salary, you are being squeezed and you're being hurt. The whole county government is to protect and to serve. Every one of our employees, there's 350 employees, we've got an $80 million a year budget, and that is there in place to serve the people of Rice County. We need to have an open discussion and decide if there's places where we can save money. Maybe the highway department keeps their truck for another year longer. We need to look at efficiency and eliminate redundancies and try to ease the tax burden on the people. Right now, I know families that are suffering and hurting, and their biggest expense right now is trying to put food on the table. So, we need to try to help the families. The basis of our society is the family. If we have healthy, strong families, we have healthy, strong societies, governments, counties, and it goes right up the line. It has to start here. And we need to try to give some relief to the working families in Rice County.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next question is, this will go to Mr. Hoysington. What did you do to prepare for this evening's forum? Who did you speak to and what have you read?
That's a good question. Well, I prayed. Good Lord be with me. I'm a little bit out of my comfort zone. You put... I'm in my wheelhouse, and I get on a project and construction site and try to make things happen, but when I get in front of a forum like this with people asking questions and I don't really know what's coming, I'm a little uncomfortable. And it's like teaching an old dog new tricks, and believe me, this campaign has taught this old dog some new tricks. I've stretched myself. But I just tried to review what's important and what we're trying to do, and we're trying to serve the people of Rice County. And I just, I came in with an open mind, and I just thought I would... I didn't bring a lot of literature with me. I wanted to just see where the spirit led me in answering the questions that came my way. It's... What you see is what you get, folks. I am passionate about this county. I am passionate about the people. My family's here. I care very much about the environment and the place where my family's growing up. And yeah, that's what happened. That's where it's at.
Thank you very much. And, Mr. Temple, the question is, what did you do to prepare for this evening's forum? Who did you speak to and what have you read?
Thank you. I shaved last night, so my sideburns are nice and smooth now. But the truth is, I've been doing my homework, I've been researching before this campaign and ramping that up even into this campaign, trying to understand the challenges of people who are different from me, what kind of challenges are they facing? I can talk about my own experience, but I'm elected to serve the needs of people different from me as well, experiencing different things from me. This isn't really a policy question, so you'll excuse me if I get a little sentimental. Across from my house, I see the viaduct, and from all the right way to the corner of my porch, you can just see the roof of the Alexander Faribault House. And especially now that the leaves are coming down, I find quite a bit of comfort and centering myself by seeing this building from the 1830s, you know, that housed the father of Rice County, the father of Faribault, alongside brand-new apartments where people are living. It might be people who are new to town, it might be people who have lived here for a long time or are now downsizing. When I need to center myself, I can look over the viaduct, look over the river, see the Alexander Faribault House. And then, when I got here as well, it's one of my favorite renditions of Alexander Faribault up on the wall. You can see really his father's heritage, his mother's heritage, French, Canadian end Dakota. I just try to center myself by realizing I am one small part of a much larger story, and all I can try to do is positively impact my part of it. So, I try to prepare myself by centering myself in the world that I know and the history of the community.
Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Temple, this is a seventh question, and I think some of you alluded to it already. It has to do with alternative energies. What is your position on alternative energy, and particularly when it comes to solar investment and wind? And that is for Mr. Temple.
Sure. I'm generally in favor of these technologies, especially as they become more and more reliable. There are, you know, nothing is perfect. There are certainly downsides, but we can't have the idea of just because something might need repairs a certain amount of the time, just because something might need a different sort of upkeep than what we're used to, that means it is somehow deficient. I am for, I'm in favor of renewable energies, especially because their sources of power are renewable. They're not controlled by international oil companies and distributors who can decide to ramp up prices, like we saw in the last few weeks, folks who can decide the ways of the market. The truth is, you know, there's the increase in gas prices in recent years, but the truth is, gas companies are making profits at an all-time high. If we can take that control and bring it locally, give folks and energy, more energy options that aren't necessarily going to be based around how much different investors want to be making in profits at that time, if we can give ourselves local options, I think that would be a big deal. If we can give people more options for their electricity than a single provider, that would be a major improvement for the people of Rice County. Because the, making sure that folks are being able to afford their lifestyles, bringing down the cost of living, isn't just about taxes and government services. It's also ensuring that they have a healthy market to choose from. They have enough choice from which to choose the most cost-effective option for themselves, and that's what we can try to facilitate as county commissioners.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, Mr. Hoysington, what is your position on alternative or renewable energies such as solar and wind?
Well, I'm a huge fan. I think solar energy and wind energy is a great option, but I think we need to let the market and we need to develop it. That alone is not going to meet the demands to run our country right now. If it's not windy, you're not producing any wind energy. If it's not sunny, you're not producing any solar energy. But yet, the demand is still there. I think the government needs to stay out of this, and I think it needs to be a free-market affair. If it makes sense to run your house on solar energy, I am a huge fan of that. What could be better? You know, let the sun heat your home, dry your clothes, heat your water, whatever. We've made great strides in that technology. But I think when it starts getting, when the government gets involved and it starts getting mandated, and we can't reach the man, we can't meet the demands. Right now in California, they're rationing electricity, but yet they have to do away with all the fossil fuels, and they can't meet the demand. I think we need to be sensible with it. I am a great steward of this, I want to be a great steward of the planet. I think it's great, but it needs to be able to be self-sufficient and work.
Thank you. All right, the eighth question, and again, this is Mr. Hoysington. How, as a county commissioner, would you work to address this issue of drug abuse and the growing number of drug overdoses? Do you support Rice County Public Health efforts to get people vaccinated against COVID and other diseases?
That was a two-part question. The first one was drug.
Yes, the drug overdoses. How would you address the issue of drug abuse and growing number of drug overdoses? That's one part. And then, do you support Rice County Public Health efforts to get people vaccinated against COVID and other diseases?
The first part of the question, drug overdose. My dad was an alcoholic, and my mom and dad divorced when I was 10 years old. So it's, the brokenness of drug overdose or any addictions is very real. It's very real, and it's very personal for me. So any help we can do, I, you know, there's lots of great facilities, and it's tough. If you've got that cross, it's brutal. And I am there to support anybody that is willing to try to kick it, because it's tough. As far as the COVID vaccine, I step back and I say, why? I am not, if a person wants to get vaccinated for COVID, I say, fine. But it's not a one-size-fits-all. The vulnerable people, you know, I respect anybody's decision, but when people lose their jobs and the healthy public choose not to get vaccinated, and they lose their job and their livelihood for it, especially now when we've learned so much, the vaccinations, people get COVID if they're vaccinated or not. And it's not a one-size-fits-all. And as far as even bringing it into the grade schools, you know, it should be the parent's decision. It shouldn't be a mandate. You know, I mean, grade schoolers have a higher risk of dying from drowning than they did of COVID. So you have to look at the big picture, and you have to ask why. And I think it's an individual choice. I really do.
Thank you very much. Mr. Temple, how as a county commissioner, would you work to address the issue of drug abuse and the growing number of drug overdoses? And part two, do you support Rice County Public Health efforts to get people vaccinated against COVID and other diseases?
I'll answer the second question first, and just so we're absolutely clear, Rice County Public Health is not forcing anyone to get vaccinated for anything. What they're doing is offering clinics and opportunities for folks at various times of the day, for families that might be available at certain times of the day, working people who might be available at certain times of the day. They're simply offering clinics in locations that might be more convenient for folks. They're providing information in multiple languages. They are giving people more choice for when, where, how, or if they might get vaccinated for measles, the flu, polio, or COVID. That's what Rice County Public Health is doing, and I support making health care and things that benefit not just that individual, but our community as a whole. Making those things more accessible for working people, I view as a positive. Getting back to addiction, there's been a lot of really good work on this, specifically in preventing opioid overdoses. The county, the Rice County Opioid Response Team, and I think I'm butchering that name, and I apologize to the folks who I made a 20-minute video about for not remembering that off the top of my head, but there's a big county-wide collaboration making that work happen. You might have read about a $1 million grant that the county has received that will be able to be distributed among their partners in that program. Again, that is their multifaceted approach to addressing the concerns, because addiction is a disease. It's an illness. It is not a character flaw, and for too long, that is how it has been approached, from a policy perspective, from a law enforcement perspective, when really it is an illness. And that is the sort of perspective that we need. We need to think outside the box and really go back to, is this helping or penalizing someone who is ill? I don't think it's a radical idea to say, we need to help them.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, now we're going to question number nine. Again, this is Mr. Temple. Everything has a cost. Where would you like to see the Rice County Commissioners place the most amount of money, and in what programs do you think need the greater amount of resources?
Unfortunately, I'll need to kind of reject the premise of the question simply because I don't know if there is just one place that needs it. I don't know if our current structure is the right kind of structure. One area that certainly needs help, I won't say if it's going to be the greatest number value, is investing in communications. Investing in a robust system for keeping citizens informed, for keeping, making sure that folks from department to department can properly communicate and collaborate with each other. That, from what I can tell as an outside perspective, is where we need the most work. Right now, I believe they have one communications staff person, and for an enormous government apparatus with many different, many different roles and disciplines that they need to try and communicate to the public, that is wholly insufficient. It's a great first step, but there needs to be more done there. In terms of where, another place that we need additional support is in mental health, as we talked about before. And mental health and addiction all go hand in hand. I want to create a system and support a system that reduces barriers for those getting help, whether that is investing in one particular department, spreading investment out across departments, or reimagining the structure to be most cost-effective and most service-oriented. That's where I would like to see that investment.
Thank you so much. And now, Mr. Hoysington. Everything has a cost. What would you want to see Rice County budget? What initiatives or programs would you believe need greater resources in the Rice County budget?
That's a good question, too. And like Sam alluded to, mental health is a big issue right now, and we just need to invest into people's health. You know, until I get into mix and understand all of the departments and where they're at, it's hard to say for me right now where more money is needed. I do think if we start at ground zero and support our families, healthy families make healthy societies. You eliminate a lot of the mental health issues when you have a healthy family. So whatever we can do to nurture our families in Rice County, I think that's where we need to invest our money. And it's a long-term investment, and it'll reap great dividends on the other end, just because of the mental health issues and the drug abuses and the different things from broken families. Yeah, I don't know. I would like to get with all of the departments and understand where all of our money's going and how it's being spent. And there again, I think we can do better with our tax dollars.
Thank you so much. Well, now, unless I see more questions rising up from the audience anymore? Isn't that an exciting crowd right there?
I appreciate the people.
I know, it's wonderful. Are there some more questions? Okay, Mr. Hoysington, just to answer this question first. We would like your comments on the proposed law, oh, on the Proposed Law Enforcement Center. I think that's right. We would like your comments on the Proposed Law Enforcement Center.
Okay. Well, that's, you know, I'm in the construction industry, so I understand things. I am not here in any position to put anybody under the bus. I look at what has happened, and there was some questionable mistakes that were probably being made. We had a building site, we bought all these properties around the existing law enforcement center with the idea of building there. That got abandoned, and they bought this 110-acre site out on the north side of town. So we have two building sites, and there again, they approved this new law enforcement center before they knew how it was going to be paid for. So me, with my background in the construction industry, there's a couple of things that we don't do. We don't have two building sites, and we don't start a project until we know how it's going to be paid for. And I don't have the history, I'm not throwing anybody under the bus on this, and I'm not saying it's the wrong decision to build this new facility. They had other options, and I'm sure it was studied, but one thing we got to think about, folks, is this was approved on a three-to-two margin. So right now, we could say Sam and I will be the third and deciding vote. You know, I mean, this is the position that we're going to be in. We're going to be in a position of authority, and we have some real decisions that make real consequences on the public. So the law enforcement center, I think it was needed. I know it was needed. I just don't know the options. I didn't study it. I just know where we're at with it.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, Mr. Temple, we would like your comments on the Proposed Law Enforcement Center.
Yeah, just to expand on what Jerry was talking about a little bit, this thing is happening. We're not going to have the opportunity to vote on whether it happens, how it happens. We might get, well, we will certainly have to be dealing with the funding consequences for years to come, and that's going to be reflected in taxes, and very much that will be out of our control. But we'll be dealing with the consequences of that, and that's just how democracy works. We needed a change because we were not meeting the legal requirements, the state requirements for correctional facilities, essentially. And a lot of that has to do with long-term policy. A lot of that has to do with deferred maintenance, deferred maintenance that has been going on for decades, partially in an effort to keep property taxes lower, partially in an effort to reduce budgets, maybe reduce public criticism, I don't know. There are a lot of hands that were part of how that deferred maintenance came to be, but that's how we got into this situation. So then, rather than getting these investments piecemeal over time, we're going to have this one big investment that we're going to be feeling pretty hard for years to come. And in the process, we have a whole block of our historic downtown, a gateway to historic downtown, that has voted to be demolished because they decided not to use them for the site while also deciding not to sell them, not to keep up those buildings for as long as they've owned them, and not really making it an open, public, transparent process. And that infuriates me. It's a whole block of historic buildings in Faribault's downtown. I got to say, I was heartbroken when they voted, and they gave the bid to demolition because now I won't get the chance to vote to stop it, and I'm very disappointed in that.
Thank you very much. Now it's for the final round. It's time for the final round, and each candidate will have one minute for closing remarks. Sum up what you want the audience to remember about why you are running for a seat on Rice County Board of Commissioners, and we'll start with Mr. Temple.
I am running because I care about Faribault's future, and Faribault's future is intrinsically linked to my future. My neighbors' futures and their realities are connected to my realities. If my neighbor is suffering with mental health, it has an effect on me. If my neighbor is, has the illness of addiction, that has an effect on me. If my neighbor can't afford to put food on the table, that has an effect on me. It has an effect on public health. It has an effect on public safety. All of these things are connected to each other, and we need to, as a community, look at things from that perspective, that an investment in each other is just as much an investment in ourselves and in our own prosperity. I've walked the walk with having events, having open communication, being available and serving the community. I hope to continue to do so as Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Temple. Mr. Hoysington?
I think you could sum it up quite easily for me. Why am I running for county commissioner? Because I care. I care about the people. I care about the people of Rice County. I care about what's happening. I think I can make things better. It's the right season for me. You know, I've, I've, I've been enormously blessed, beyond measure. I could have never written a script for my life and, and had it turn out to be as beautiful and as good as it has been. And it's my turn to give back. That's how I feel right now. I, I have the energy, I have the passion, and I have the desire to make Faribault a better place. And my family's here, my kids are here, I'm planted here, and I care about the people of Rice County.
Thank you so much. Well, this concludes the 2022 American Association Candidate Forum for Rice County Board of Commissioners, District Three. Members of AAUW wish to thank the candidates and the live audience for their interest and participation. This candidate forum has been recorded and will be broadcast on FCTV later this month. Please note that AAUW is also hosting a candidate forum for the offices of Rice County Sheriff and Rice County Attorney on Thursday, October 20th, 5:30 to 6:30, in the Faribault City Hall Council chambers. Remember to vote on November 8. Absentee ballots and early voting are available at the Rice County Auditor's Office at the Rice County Government Center. Again, on behalf of the Faribault branch of AAUW, I want to thank Mr. Hoysington and Mr. Temple for being here tonight, and for the audience participating and writing some very good questions. Thank you very much, and good evening.